Thanks for the reminder again. So, yes, we have the two conditions that are recommended for for the approval. Variances, the first condition.
All plugged in everything. We're putting anything else in.
I'm sorry, Mr. Dawson?
Mark, Mark. Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can't hear anybody.
I can hear you just fine.
Yeah. Mark, I've got a question. I don't know if Bruce is done with his question or not. I don't. Bruce, are you done? Maybe he doesn't hear me. Let me ask my question. And this is based upon a recollection of the reading of the staff report, which is a few several days ago. So I'm not sure I got this completely right, but I think it was stated either by staff or by the petitioner that the area of the residential accessory buildings is not counted in the total area of all accessory buildings. Is that correct?
So all accessory structures that are 200 square feet or greater are counted to this ratio. And I think what you're, what you might be referring to is what's actually on the complete.
But they can see you, but I don't think they can hear me.
There are some structures that are under 200 square feet that are not counted towards that. It's just the structures that are 200 square feet or large.
So there's nothing to distinguish the residential versus non-residential accessory buildings. All accessory buildings in excess of 200 square feet each are counted in that calculation.
Correct. The accessory structures, that's, that's correct.
Got you. Okay, I don't have anything further on that. I do have something on another matter I want to ask about. Once we're done with this matter, it seems like, and I don't want to overstep anybody who might have, excuse me, have a question on this, this case. So when, when we wrap it up, I want to ask a question on, on something else. So are we wrapped up with this? Or is there anything further anybody wants to say? I see Bonnie does have her hand up. I think Rose.
That staff recommended if we choose to recommend approval, are we allowed to add additional conditions to a motion?
Ms. Paulus, could you repeat that last part of your question that kind of?
Yes. Are members of the Board of Adjustment allowed to add conditions to a motion in addition to what staff recommends?
Yes, you are, Ms. Paulus. We have any other questions regarding this case?
Not me.
Well, Mark, if there, there's nothing further on that case, I do have a question or two for you on another matter on the agenda. The reconsideration of the case that we dealt with last month. And I want to ask you about the rules that apply to a reconsideration request. And first, I want to ask confirmation that this is not a public hearing. Is that not correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
So it is the responsibility of the board to make a judgment as to whether they believe there's any new evidence presented in the letter prepared by the applicant or his or her representative. And then if they, the board does feel there's new evidence, the board could vote to set the case for a public hearing with or without any further input by the petitioner or, I should say applicant and his and or his or her representative. Um, may, may include the, the further input at this point or not. And if, if that is the action to consider recommend reconsideration and set the case for a public hearing, it is just a matter of a vote amongst the board members. Is that correct?
That, Mr. Chair, that's correct. It'd be a majority, just the majority of yes votes in order for the reconsideration to pass, and then it would be scheduled for the next public.
It would go on the agenda next month.
Correct.
Okay. Now, the board, if it wished, could ask for input from the petitioner or his or her representative. Could it not?
Mr. Chair, that would be up to the board's discretion.
Okay. Um, but the key matter is whether the letter prepared by the applicant and which we have provides what we determined to be new evidence that's germane, it's relevant, and that is substantial to warrant a new, a reconsideration. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, that, that's, those, those answers are all that I need. Um, before saying that that's all, you know, that we don't have anything further on that matter, I should open it up or ask other board members. Do any of them have any questions for Mr. Castro on that reconsideration matter from a procedural standpoint? I'm not sure anybody does have any. Okay, so Mark, I, I just pass the ball back to you.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. At this point, I don't have anything else. We can break until the start of the public hearing. Um, I have 1:18 right now. We can take a short break and, and reconvene at 1:30 for the public hearing.
Okay, very good. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Chair, I have 1:30. If we want to go ahead and get started with the public hearing.
Okay. Let me ask Ms. Hamblin for a roll call.
Good afternoon, Chair Michael Marks.
All here.
Bruce Dawson. Bruce Dawson. He was having audio problems. I'm not sure if he hears us. Jesse Lugo. Jesse, are you on the meeting?
Here.
Thank you. Miranda Schubert.
Here. Erman.
Mr. Ann, are you on the meeting?
Here.
Thank you. Bonnie Paulus.
Present.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Okay, very good. Uh, then we'll start with my reading of these prepared comments. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular meeting of the City of Tucson's Board of Adjustment. This meeting is being recorded, and by joining the meeting, you are given consent to that recording. We have one item on today's agenda. Or one public hearing item that's on today's agenda. After that case is introduced, staff will present its staff report. Board members may then ask staff questions. After that, the applicant or his or her representative will have time to speak. Other people, first those in favor and then those in opposition, will have an opportunity, opportunity to speak as well. The applicant will then be given an opportunity for rebuttal. Throughout this period, board members may ask questions of the applicant and other speakers. When all of that testimony is completed, the board will close the public hearing, discuss the matter, and then vote on a motion made and seconded by board members. All of those who wish to speak will be asked to first state their name and address for the record. All presentations today must be directed solely to the board and not to staff or members of the audience. And all must be related to the case at hand and not to any other matter. For those who wish to speak, we ask that you be brief and to the point. Repetition of testimony already given by other witnesses is not necessary. If necessary, I will invoke a time limit for all speakers. Please remember that all testimony given today must be given under oath. And a reminder, please be sure to mute yourself and turn your camera off unless you were addressing the board. The decision of the Board of Adjustment may be appealed to the Superior Court of Pima County by filing a complaint for special action with the Pima County Superior Clerk's Office within 30 days of the board's decision. For additional information on this filing process, please contact the Superior Court Clerk's Office or an attorney after today's public hearing. At this time, I am going to ask city staff to raise their right hand, and I will administer the oath to you. If you're ready, do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, thank you. That completes my comments. I will now turn it back to Mr. Castro to present the first staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Our case for today is C-10 dash 23 dash zero two Mo New Barn, Kevin and Diane Mo, 9111 East Magdalena Road, RX1 zoning. The applicant's property is a 3.44 acre parcel, zoned RX1 residential, and is developed with the single-family residence, guest house, and several other accessory structures. The applicants are proposing to construct a new steel barn. The applicants are requesting the following variances. One, allow be constructed with a height of 21 and a half feet as measured to the midpoint between the eve and ridge of the roof, which exceeds the 12-foot height limit, and allow the combined total gross floor area of all accessory structures 200 square feet or larger to exceed 50% of the combined total gross floor area of the structure, all as shown on the submitted plans. The engineering section of Planning and Development Services Department has no objection or adverse comments. Planning and Development Services staff has no objection to the approval of the applicant's requested variances. Should the board grant the variances, staff recommends the following options. A, access to the barn shall be from the east side of the building only. B, apply a technique to capture rainwater from the roof to create and maintain passive water harvesting basins on two sides of the barn, each planted with three minimum five-gallon trees chosen from the following varieties. Foothill Palaverde, Velvet Mesquite, or Acacia. It is the opinion of staff that the special circumstances applicable to the property and that the proposed barn would not constitute a grant of special privileges inconsistent with the limitations other properties in the vicinity and zone, and would not be detrimental to public welfare or injurious to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. To date, we have the total of seven written approvals, three outside of the notice area, and four written protest. For the record, board members have been provided comments. Mr. Chair and members of the board, this concludes staff's presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, I do have one for you right off the bat, Mr. Castro. The conditions that you recommend include, the first one being access to the barn shall be from the east side of the building only. Um, you didn't state it, but let me just ask, does that access mean both vehicular and pedestrian? There's no meaning, there's no no vehicle access from the west side? Might there be a door, a man door on the west side?
Mr. Chair, it was not clear in the application, because these conditions actually came up from the neighborhood meeting. But that would be a great question to ask the applicant or the property owner, just to clarify.
So these, these, these two conditions came up from the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, and we'll get to that after we get through the petitioner. And I'll then ask, are there any of those neighbors present? But do you know? Or do you, you have any idea right at this point whether they're present?
Uh, Mr. Chair, it does, we do have some of the neighbors here.
Okay, okay, good. Um, anybody else on the board have a question for Mr. Castro at this point? Uh, hearing none. Uh, thank you, Mr. Castro, and we'll move on to the petitioner. And could the petitioner identify himself, uh, or by, uh, let me, uh, where you win, and then have you state your name and address? Is that Mr. Moyer?
Yes, it is.
Okay, could you raise your right hand?
Yep, it's over there.
Okay, you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, would you then state your name and address and clarify your role in, I presume, as representative?
Hi, my name is Glenn Moyer. I'm with WLV Group in Tucson at 4444 East Broadway. I'm here today just helping out the applicants who are Kevin and Diane Mo. Uh, but, uh, you know, Board of Adjustment is not something they are as familiar with, so they just asked us to give them a hand here.
Okay, very good. Why don't you proceed and give us the information you think is relevant?
Okay, well, um, I will say, just to start off, I have, uh, read the staff report and the recommended conditions, and we are amenable to those. Uh, we can talk later. After I get through this, we'll get the Mo's on here and talk about the man door. But to bring you up to speed, the mailout for this public hearing, uh, for the neighborhood meeting was February 15. The neighborhood meeting was March 1st. We posted this hearing, uh, on April 5th, and here we are 21 days later, ready for the public hearing. This is the site. It's at the north and east corner of Gollum and Magdalena. There's a single family detached to the northeast and south, a church to the west, and Old Spanish Trail is a little further to the south. Uh, it's 3.44 acres, as, as was noted by staff. Uh, it's zoned RX1. The surrounding zoning is RX1 to the north, R1 to the west, and SR to the south. The existing house is on the high ground in the southeast portion of the site, and the arena is, uh, on this, uh, I don't, I, I trust my pointer shows up in this cleared area, uh, along the west. The, um, property has been previously developed with a main house, a guest house, and what's called a bunk house, uh, which, uh, is an accessory sleeping structure and, and several other buildings. The new barn is, uh, located here along the west and is 23 feet from Gollum, 140 feet setback from Magdalena, 225 feet setback from the east property line, and 270 feet from the north property line. It's a 50 by 50, 2,500 square foot barn with, uh, a vehicle lift. Uh, and like I said, it goes in the area that was previously cleared, uh, 24 years or so ago. Uh, that's the minimum time that it's been cleared, just based on historical aerial photos. Um, but it could be, uh, a lot longer than that. Variance one, and I can read these out, but these are also in the staff report, so I don't necessarily feel that's necessary unless you want me to specifically get that on the record of the hearing. Variance one is for, uh, height. Uh, the limit is 12 feet. We're proposing 21 feet, one-half inch, uh, for the, um, midpoint height of the building, which is how the UDC measures it, and variance two is for square footage. Um, the, uh, code allows the accessory buildings to be 50% of the area of the main house. Um, but if you connect it to the main house, it becomes basically a part of the main house, and neither of these variances would be required. Here's the calculations for the two ways of looking at it, either with a variance or without a variance. If we were to connect the new barn to the house, uh, and then measured the areas and calculated the areas per the UDC, uh, section 6.6.3. E, um, it would be 25% of the main house for the accessory structures, and that would not require a variance. Uh, but what we're proposing, what we want to do is to put the barn in a pace that makes more sense from the site standpoint, an area that's already been cleared, and that's where you get the 132% variance. So those, uh, two, uh, choices, either the variance or no variance are, uh, shown here. This is the areas that would be impacted. If there was, uh, no variance, we would have to, uh, put the building where the red circle is. What we'd rather do is put the building where the green circle is, put the barn where the green circle is in the area that was previously cleared and used as a horse arena. The findings are also gone over in the, uh, staff report. So again, I won't, uh, completely restate them, but, uh, the findings for, uh, special circumstances are based on the topography of the site, uh, and if we, um, couldn't use that location, it would create an undue burden. The existing topo is natural. It's not a self-imposed hardship. Uh, the great variances don't create a special privilege. It just allows us to use the cleared area, uh, instead of having to, uh, cut and fill, or cut the trees down and fill another area. It will not be detrimental. The main house is on the high ground, um. And without the variance, we couldn't, you know, reasonably complete this project in conformance of UDC. Um, the new barn will be screened by, uh, trees along Gollum Road and by the general size of the site, um, because it, uh, is a larger than the minimum lot size in the area. The, um, setbacks to the other three sides now are, as I stated in the beginning, it's 140 feet to Magdalena, 225 feet to the east, and 270 feet to the north. Uh, and that ensures that, uh, any impacts will be minor. Um, and it will not imply, uh, impair light or air, uh, supply to the adjacent properties again because of the, uh, large size of the site. And so, uh, because of that, it won't substantially diminish any property values in the neighborhood. Just a reminder, um, excuse me. I got one off, but, uh, so we already read number seven, the minimum variance, um, based on the design of the site. Uh, but here's the reminder, um, that if we, uh, we don't have, uh, aren't able to use, uh, the variance request, the barn would be the only place left really to, to make it work is, uh, where those trees are in the red circle. But what we'd rather do is, uh, subject to the conditions the staff is recommending, place the barn here in the green circle. If you have any questions, I can answer them. Uh, I think it might be best to get the Mo's on the line, uh, to talk about the man door. Um, it was not something that came up in our discussions with the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. Um, you know, the, the vehicular door was the main one we thought about. Um, the way we've got it, it points to the east, towards the interior of the site. It's, uh, uh, the way we thought would reduce the impact the most, but, um, we did not address the man door. That completes my, uh, presentation. Any questions? I'd be happy to take them.
Uh, Mr. Moyer. Uh, this is Mike Marks. And I just want to ask, uh, did you directly or on behalf of the, uh, Mo family or the Mo's, uh, if they were present, did you agree with it to the, with the neighbors, uh, in their suggestion of those two rezoning conditions?
Yeah, the, uh, the, the original plan, uh, as we sketched it out, uh, we had the door opening to the north because that was the farthest setback. Um, but in speaking with the neighbor to the north, uh, they requested that it be, uh, at the neighborhood meeting, requested that door not face north. So we faced it east to the other interior of the site.
Okay, so essentially you indicated no objection to those conditions?
Yeah, no, um, we can have the Mo's, uh, confirm, uh, as they are actually the applicant in this case, but, uh, I, uh, know of no objection from the Mo's at this time to either of the conditions. We've been over them, uh, with them previously on a couple of occasions at least.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Moore. Let me ask the other board members, uh, do any of you have any questions you want to ask Mr. Moore? I see Ms. Paulus has got her hand up. Bonnie, do you hear me?
Yes, sorry about that. Mr. Moyer, from the site plan, it looks like primary access to the property is from Gollum Road, is that correct?
Ms. Paulus, uh, member of the board, the access is from Gollum and Magdalena. I would say, uh, the main access, the most frequently used access, uh, I think is off of, uh, Magdalena, but I, I think they're both used, both access points. There's existing driveway connections to both streets.
And will any new access points be proposed for this development?
There are none proposed.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board? Well, hearing none, let's, uh, move on to the Mo family then. Uh, Mr. Moyer, why don't you, uh, bring them on?
Well, um, uh, David and Kevin, if you're there.
Yes.
Sounds like they're there.
I'm here. Hey, Jackson. Uh, hang on. Okay, what's, what are we talking about? I don't know what the picture's not on there.
So, um, Mr. Mo, this is Glenn Moyer. You're helping out there. Uh, the question is, uh, are there going to be any man doors? Um, and I, and I really should be. And I really should be directing to Mr. Marks, but the question is, are there going to be any any man doors besides the vehicular door and the barn?
The only man door is going to be in between the two larger doors that faces to the east?
Okay, so then answers that question. So the the condition, if the case carries and it is attached to that rezoning that
I'll be up there just.
Um, that would apply to vehicles and man doors?
Correct.
Okay, is there anything further that the Moe's wanted to add?
I don't, it's just simple building being put up there and that's pretty much it.
Okay.
We don't really have any garage right now, we have a couple of carports. So we would like a garage for the backhoe and the things that we do, quads and a trailer, we're pretty active people.
Okay. Okay, very good.
We also have collector cars, all that stuff was written down, so I'm not sure what I'm supposed to be answering to. Because we have, we have several things, we have collector cars, we have quads, we got the toy hauler, we have the backhoe and a couple other small vehicles and stuff, so I, we're trying to just get them out of the weather.
Well, I don't think there's anything further we need or that we, any other questions we have of you. And what I suggest, unless other board members do have questions for you, is to stay pat and be available for questions after the public input, if there is any, if there's a need for rebuttal, so, so if you don't mind, we'll move forward into that next phase.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, and thank you, Mr. Moyer. Let me turn to all those people I can't see. Are there any anybody in the virtual audience who wishes to speak? And I don't know if we have that ability for you to, we don't have that chat feature. So why don't, let me just ask, and I guess I do see Michael Muller with a hand up. Are you here for this case?
Yes, sir, I was, I'm, this is Michael Mueller, I live at 9161 Magdalena.
Well, let me interrupt and have you raise your right hand and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth.
I do.
Okay, and you were saying where you live, but would you repeat that?
Yes, sir, my name is Michael Mueller, I live at 9161 East Magdalena. About, let's do northeast of Kevin and Kevin Moe. I'm basically just calling in in support of the proposal. I attended the neighborhood meeting and liked the layout that was proposed and understood the concerns from the north neighbor about potential for noise and then the suggestion to change the access to the east made good sense. And obviously, this time of year, it'd probably be a little bit nicer, more shaded in the afternoons, but that's all I had to add, just a neighbor in support.
Very good, and you said you, your property is to the northeast of the subject property?
Yes, sir, I share about 50 feet of property line at the southwest corner of mine and at the northeast corner of Kevin's.
Mm-hmm, I think I, I know which piece. Okay, well, I don't have any questions, thank you very much. If there's any board members that do have a question, please let me know now. And hearing none, I'll excuse you, but thank you again. And let me, let me see if there's anybody else present that wishes to speak on this case. Could you quickly identify yourself if you are out there? There's a Victoria King.
Hi.
Hi.
Victoria King, but I'm also here with my father, who's, we're both neighborhood neighbors of the project.
Okay, why don't I ask you to raise your right hands, both of you, and you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Could, could you individually state your name and address for the record?
I'm Victoria King and we're owners of the property at 707 South Gollum Road.
My name is Jerry Goff. I'm east of Kevin with three lots, 9131, 9141, and 9151 East Magdalena.
Let me, let me try to identify because I'm looking at a map. And man, the the property you identified, are you at the southwest corner of Old Spanish and Gollum?
No, I am northeast.
North, northeast?
Yeah. Northeast of Kevin's property.
And are you a supporter or opponent?
I'm a supporter.
Okay, okay, so you are not the abutting property owner to the north? You're two pieces north?
Correct.
Okay, and Mr. Goff, your property again was what?
9131, 9141, and 9151.
The pieces immediately to the east that were.
Yes.
Okay, okay, gotcha. Now our map doesn't show that you indicated support or objection.
Well, that would be my fault, and I do support what Kevin is doing.
Oh, you do?
Oh, yeah, we bought that, I bought that property. A lot, the big portion of the reason was, was his old barn that adjoins my mine at 9151. I love the ambiance, the western flair, you know, that whole area has been a lot of history, a lot of western stuff, so that to me just kind of blends in.
Okay. I, it's nice to know which pieces you're talking about, so there's support from those three pieces and then the piece north of the one immediately to the north. Do you have anything you want to add in terms of why?
Well, like I say, that, it just blends in, it's kind of the rancher, farmer theory in that area. And, you know, Kevin, what Kevin's doing there, it's just part of that. And that's part of the reason, like I say, that I bought in that area.
Okay, very good, how about Ms. King?
We actually have basically an empty lot right now, we're getting ready to submit permits for building ourselves and we, although I think everything we're doing is within and won't need any variances, I'd like to know that in the future, if we wanted to potentially do some modifications that maybe we needed a variance, I would hope I would have Kevin's support for that. So just neighborly, I don't see that it's going to be negatively impacting the neighborhood in any way. You know, there's the school across the street, I think actually having that barn as a little bit of a buffer between the road and the house and the property, I think is actually a benefit to the kids and the traffic going up and down the street to the school. So I just, I actually think it's a good idea.
Okay, just an observation, south of Kevin is, is, is a property that the house is kind of on the east side of that. But if you look past Old Spanish Trail, he's got a huge set of apartments that are there that to me would detract from a residential, you know, flair of the area. And then, of course, he's got a church and a school on the, on the west sides of him, so that to me doesn't seem like would be an objection to have a building there, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you very much, I don't have any questions for you. I'll pause and see if any other board members do. But hearing none, thank you for your input and I'll excuse you and see if there's anybody else that wants to speak. So let me ask, is there anybody else out there? Don't hear them and obviously don't see them. So I don't think there's a need for any rebuttal. I think that would be kind of foolish to rebut that. So unless there's something that Mr. Moyer or the Moe family wish to add that is something critical, I'd like to get to the point of a closure of the hearing, but I'll give you a couple of seconds to think that over.
Mr. Chair, I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you very much. So let me close the hearing and let me turn to the board and see what they have to say, and at this point, somebody wants to initiate a discussion or somebody wishes to make a motion, please do so.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to start a discussion. I personally don't see any real problems with the request for these variances, but I do have two concerns that I'd like to know if the board would consider adding two conditions to the variance request. One is that commercial uses are not permitted on the site or within the new building that's being proposed. And the second one is that the existing mature trees to the west of the house will be preserved in situ. And I asked for those two because they were both raised as reasons for wanting this variance and concerns from one or two of the people who wrote in opposition. And I would like to see those two conditions added, if that's agreeable to.
You know, I really, I personally don't have any objection to either one. I want to also say I'm not sure of the need to, for the first one, because what it's essentially saying is you can't violate the code. If you can't, if, if, if the code already says you can't have commercial activity on the property, then adding a condition that commercial activity is not allowed is redundant. Now, I don't want to present an argument and I wouldn't really vote against it if everybody wanted it, but I just question, is it really necessary?
Well, it was brought up in one of the protest letters as a concern of one of the neighbors. And I guess because we had a special exception in my own neighborhood a number of years ago where classic cars were being restored and when the prop.
We want to give her a little bit of time? Mr. Castro, is there any precedent for this?
Mr. Chair, can you repeat that again?
Is there any precedent for dealing with a frozen board member?
No, Mr. Chair, you could move on to see if there's any board, other board members that have concerns.
Yeah, let me do that and we'll come back, hopefully, because she really fell out, maybe she'll rejoin us. Let me ask if there's any other board members that wish to offer any discussion, any thoughts on what was just said? Not hearing any. There we go.
I'm sorry, my connection with this meeting seems to be cutting in and out, but seeing no other comments, I would like to make a motion. I'm getting my template here. I move that we grant the following variances in case number C102303 to allow the barn to be constructed with a height of 21 feet, one half inch as measured to the midpoint between the eve and the ridge of the roof, which exceeds the 12-foot height limit. And two, to allow the combined total gross floor area of all accessory structures, 200 square feet or larger to exceed 50% of the combined total gross floor area of the principal structure, all as shown on the submitted plans, subject to the following conditions. A, access to the barn shall be from the east side of the building only. This refers to vehicular as well as pedestrian access. B, apply a technique to capture rainwater from the roof to the barn to create and maintain passive water harvesting bases on two sides of the barn, each planted with three minimum five-gallon trees chosen from the following native varieties, Cercium microfilum, Prospus, Velatina, Acacia constricta. I would like to also add two additional conditions. One, to ensure that commercial uses are not permitted on the site or within the new building. And D, that existing mature trees located to the west of the existing house will be preserved in situ. The evidence presented to the board shows that there are special circumstances which were not self-imposed and which are applicable to the property and support the granting of the requested variances. And the variances imposed will not be materially detrimental to the public welfare or interest to other property or improvements in the neighborhood and is the minimum necessary to provide relief.
Very good, thank you. Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Okay, there's a second, a motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay. Jesse Lugo.
Jesse Lugo, so we have at least one nay, so given that, I'm going to ask Ms. Hamblin for a roll call.
Michael Marks.
Aye.
Bruce Dawson. Just Jesse Lugo.
No, I would support it, but without additional conditions that, that were, that were placed.
Miranda Schubert.
Aye.
Irma Duran. Ms. Duran, do you have a vote?
Aye.
Paulus.
Aye.
I'm going to ask Bruce Dawson again, can you hear me? I think he's having connection issues, so we have four ayes and a nay.
So the quorum is four. So Ms. Hamblin, we have four ayes, so the motion carries.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lugo.
I said no because of without the additional conditions, so I vote no, so it's not for, for zip.
So Ms. Hamblin, what, did you account for that and what is the vote?
The vote is four ayes and a nay.
Anybody hear me?
Bruce, we can hear you now.
Okay, I'm having a lot of technical difficulty.
Understood, Bruce, would you vote on the motion that's on the floor?
I vote aye.
Aye, thank you, Bruce. Mr. You have five ayes and one nay.
So we do have six present.
Yeah, I'm on that phone.
Yes, current, we have six present.
Okay, so that completes that matter. And so, uh, thank you to all those involved in that case and we uh that exhausts the uh public hearing part of today's agenda. But we do have at least that reconsideration matter on the agenda, but there's more than that, is that not correct? Let me get to the agenda. Give me one second. Yeah, well, the reconsideration is the first item. I'm gonna take the moment, make a comment basically to staff and that is um I think we'd be helping ourselves a whole lot if we can move from this Zoom environment to a face-to-face environment. And I imagine this is all still mayor and council policy, and so talking to staff doesn't mean we're, I'm talking to the people who have uh the ability to make any changes. But you can see with these technical problems, uh, the difficulty with the Zoom calls. Um, it's working, um, but I don't think that well. So I don't know whether this can be taken to the higher authorities, uh, and if, even if they were taken to those authorities, it would matter. But by God, I think it's about time to move on. Um, Ms. Paulus.
Uh, Mr. Marks, I, I agree with you. My understanding was that once mayor and council went back to in-person meetings, that the restriction on virtual meetings for BCCs was also lifted. Is that not correct, Mr. Castro?
I'll have to defer to uh Ms. because I'm not, I'm sure as to the status of that.
Hello, this is hello, this is Jennifer with the city's, the city attorney's office. I, I believe there was a question directed to me. Did I hear you right, Mark?
Uh, did you hear the question? Ms. Bonham?
Yes, I, I believe I heard the question correctly. It was whether uh the board can meet in person. And um the answer to that is the board can decide to either meet in person or online, but uh, you know, hybrid is not permitted.
So, so the answer, if I got it right, is it's, it's up to the board to decide on whether we want to move back to an in-person, is that correct?
That is correct, Chairman.
Interesting. Well, I don't know, uh whether we take a formal vote on this or not. I, I know that, you know, any change oftentimes is difficult, even if you uh don't if you feel and you agree that there are a lot of negativities about the status quo. Um, there's always some positive, and so maybe we aren't going to be in unison, but I'd like to um open it up to other board members to express their thoughts on that, and then if it is within our purview, I'd like to ask for a vote. So first, what are your, your thoughts? Ms. Schubert, do you have anything you want to express?
Were you talking to me?
Yeah, I, I was.
Oh, um, I, I really, I'm fine with whatever the rest of the board consensus is. Um, I have to, I have to attend virtual meetings for other things, so the technology aspect isn't really a hurdle for me. Um, so I would defer to the other members.
Okay, Mr. Dawson, uh, what are your thoughts?
Sorry, I would, uh, I would be willing to go uh in person.
Mr. Lugo, what do you think?
Uh, in person, please.
Okay, well. Um, Ms. Hamblin, could you do a roll call on whether uh, who would like to uh uh, meetings going forward?
Um, Michael Marks.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes, yes.
Jesse Lugo.
Yes.
Miranda Schubert.
Yes.
Irma Duran.
Yes.
Connie Paulus.
Yes.
Um, that's six yeses, Mr. Chair. Um, I will note from a staff perspective, we're happy to honor this request. I am not sure if we can happen for our next regularly scheduled meeting or not. And if we cannot, we will report back to the board next month in our business agenda, so can be apprised of the status of that request.
Okay, very good. All right, well, let's move on and we have the reconsideration to deal with. And um, I asked the staff, Mr. Castro, uh, study session, uh, what the rules were in dealing with this matter. And uh, a- and I think you all heard that the rules are not that first, this is not a public hearing. So we're not bound to open this matter to uh others outside of the board for any input. Um, we have right to do that if we wish. Um. But the, the rule in the code is, and I have that with me, let me read this. Uh, a request for reconsideration may be made only where there is an inherent factor law in the decision or where a party has new evidence or material that was not available at the time of the public hearing. So I take it um, the board members read the material provided uh by the petitioner to staff. And um, I wonder if any board member can identify anything in that letter that constituted new evidence consistent with the rules in the code. And if you did, would you identify that for us?
I am still, still have a huge technical difficulties here. But I would be willing to reconsider. Because I think that there were uh certain considerations that um you may have overlooked. And uh so I would be willing to rehear it.
Okay, before we go to a motion, um, does any other board member have any comments on what it is that would justify reconsideration? Ms. Paulus, why don't you go ahead?
Well. I've had a problem with this case. I, I, I realize that um, it's a minor variance request and that the vehicular vandalism in the area is a recognized problem beyond the control of the applicant. However, the original paperwork stated that the building was to be used for quote employee parking. And I felt that that was misleading or untrue. And upon questioning about um the presence of the RV and the need for the height of the structure, it was admitted that the RV was a mobile office and that was the factor determining the need for the building height. Don't consider the owner to really be an employee of the business. I consider them to be an owner. Um, it looks like there is sufficient employee parking on site across the street. And we never received an answer about whether or not the vehicles parked in the manner that was shown on the paperwork would be able to maneuver in the presence of an RV also parked in that space. So I do have a problem with reconsideration.
Okay. Um, anybody else? So, um, I would call for a motion, but I, 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 I think we need to be reminded that we're we're still bound uh by the code to vote in favor if we believe or we have been given information that would be considered new evidence. Uh, regardless of who might be presenting that new evidence or, or the information or not, if the new, the information presented in the letter is information that we had already heard, it would not be new evidence. So I'm not, I, I don't recall in my reading anything that constituted new evidence. And clearly, the petitioner could always appeal the decision. Um, but I, I want to move to a motion and see where everybody stands. And so, um Mr. Dawson, if you don't have a problem with reconsideration, you may be inclined to make a motion. Do you want to make a motion in favor of reconsideration? You might have lost him. Give him a second.
Harry, can you hear me now?
Is that Mr. Dawson?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, yes, uh, Bruce, did you hear my last comment?
Yes, yes, I heard, and I would be willing to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, uh, you, go ahead.
Okay, in the case, uh, let me get the paper here. Yes, uh, okay, in the, sorry. In the case of uh C ten dash twenty-three dash zero-two, I move that we grant uh the reconsideration.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's been a motion made and seconded to reconsider the matter. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Nay. Ms. Hamblin, could you uh do a roll call?
Certainly. Michael Marks.
Nay.
Bruce Dawson.
Aye.
Um, Jesse Lugo.
Yes.
Miranda Schubert.
Aye.
Irma Duran.
Aye.
Bonnie Paulus.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay. Um, that is, that, so that matter is uh to be set for public hearing uh next month. I would ask uh Ms. Hamblin or Mr. Castro uh to address these next listed other business items. Uh, these are items I know nothing about.
Before we jump to the other business items, I would just like to clarify for the board that the reconsideration case will essentially be heard as a completely new case at the next meeting. It, it to be considered a continuation of a prior hearing. The applicant has the ability to re-present to present again a news and new facts associated with that. Um, so we will be proceeding accordingly when we provide materials. So if you see duplicates of prior information, please keep that in mind.
Okay.
Mark, do you want to address the other business?
Yes, let me get, let me share my screen. So the next item we have um under other businesses to talk about um, the appeal coming up for next month. It's a DDO, a design development option. And it's an appeal to the Board of Adjustment. So just for background, uh, what a DDO is, um, a DDO, a design development option is essentially a way that um a property owner or can can um request to modify um a building setback. It can be used to modify um the of a perimeter wall not to exceed more than two feet above um what is permitted. And the other thing that you can use a DDO for is for substitution of landscaping materials or screening materials. Um. So those are the three things that a DDO can be used for. That, that a DDO um decision is uh appealed. The way that the process goes is that um the adjustment would hear and decide on the appeal. Um, the DRB would review the appeal be prior to the Board of Adjustment. DRB is a design review board um that consists of some design professionals. We have uh contractors, architects, um registered landscape architects, so that's essentially what makes up the design review board. And why this is important is that the board will give the, another perspective from a design professional about um what the decision was and then how the request and so does not meet the required findings for a DDO approval. Um, and then let me get to the next topic here, so essentially the board is going to be reviewing for compliance with the findings for DDO approval, so it's Board of Adjustment, um findings that you would typically see. Um, these are specific findings for a DDO. Um, so under section three eleven D of the UDC, uh, we do have a list of general findings for all the modification requests. And then we also have additional findings for setbacks and wall height modification requests. And then for those types of DDOs that are to landscape or screening, um, we do have also that finding that they need to comply with, um, which is simply that it, it can increase a landscape buffer area, buffer yard area um to what is required, to less than what is required or reduce the height reading feature, so they could do some substitutions of landscape materials. Um, but they just can't uh decrease the required size for landscape or reduce the screening height of a, of let's say a wall or vegetative screen. Um, but for next month, without going too much, the discussion about the uh case, it's it's going to be for uh building setbacks, so we're going to be looking at DDO findings for approval, items one and two. Um, as you can see, there's a list here and I'll just go through them real quickly. Um, the first finding i- is not a request that's previously denied as a variant, so if this went before the Board of Adjustment, obviously this would, this, uh, the DDO would not be approved because it does not, I mean. Um, the second one does not modify conditional requirement or finding to determine whether the use should be allowed in the um, that's self-explanatory. Is not a condition of approval for rezoning or special exception land use application, so if it is a condition of those uh types of applications, I can't seek a DDO to modify that. Um, D does not modify a requirement of an overlay zone such as limited to scenic corridor, environmental resource, major streets and routes setback or an airport environment zone, so if there was a modification to that, that would automatically trigger a variance, uh, variance request rather than a DDO. Um, does not result in the deletion or waiver of UDC. Um, biggest example I can think of is if someone is asking for a zero setback, that's essentially that's essentially a deletion of a UDC requirement, um, so that would kick it to a variance request. Uh, letter F, the modification applies to property that cannot be developed in conformity visions of this chapter due to physical circumstances or conditions of the properties such as irregular shape, nervous of lot, exceptional topographic condition or location. Uh, this is similar to one of the variance findings, um, where you have unique or special circumstances that, um, exist on the property. Um, letter G does not create a situation where proposed development substantially reduces the amount of privacy that would be injured by residents any more than would be available if the development was built without the modification. So essentially, if the, um, that this is not impact privacy, does the modification impact privacy? Um, letter H does not create a situation where proposed development visibility uh, within the required visibility triangle on adjoining streets or either vehicle pedestrian traffic. So if there's some building, a structure close to the front lot line, we want to make sure um, that they're not going to be, um, blocking site visibility from the or anything like that for pedestrians who may be using the sidewalk in a vehicle backing out, we want to make sure that there is some site visibility. Um, that's not going to be impacted. Uh, letter I does not create a situation where the proposed development would cause objectional noise, odors, trespass, lighting, similar adverse impacts adjacent to properties or development. And letter J does not create a situation where the development will result increase in the number of residential dwelling units or the square footage of non-residential buildings greater than would occur if the development was built without the modification. Um, this throws some people off, but essentially what it, it's just to make sure that we're not allowing a modification to a project or to a building that would otherwise require a rezoning, so let's say if you do have um, an R one zone property and you were actually building a second unit, but that second you did a, a setback modification, um, that's actually skirting, um, the requirement for rezoning because you can't have two. Most cases, you can't have two units in an R one zone. I'm just using that as example, but that, that's, that's essentially what that means, is that you can't ask for a building setback on something that's not allowed. Um, and then, so we go to number two, which is specific to, uh, the findings, a setback and wall height modification. Um, letter A does not create a situation where the proposed development will obstruct views of dramatic landforms, unusual strands of vegetation or parks to nearby properties substantially more than would occur if the development were built without the modification. So this has to do with the views. Um, letter B provides design alternatives to better integrate the development into the design character of the immediate neighborhood. Uh, letter C does not apply to a setback requirement of a flexible lot development. Um, and letter D does not create a situation where the proposed development will interfere with the optimum air temperature or solar radiation orientation of buildings on adjoining properties. The more than would occur if the building or structures were built without the modification. And E does not create a situation where the proposed use of the party will impose objectional noise levels on adjoining properties greater than would occur if the buildings or structures were built without the modifications. Um, so with that, let me, sorry, I'll put that back up here. Does anybody have any questions on any of those, um, findings for approval? Mr. Marks, did you have anything?
No, I did not have any, any questions or comments on that.
Oh, I see. Ms. Paulus, you have?
I have a question. Um, I've, uh, received a number of DDO decisions from PDSD over the years. And, um, we are never provided with a written report from the director as to why a DDO was approved or denied. Is that something that we will be provided at the meeting, uh, when we consider this appeal?
Ms. Paulus and members of the board and Mr. Chair, there will be a staff report provided, um, for you to review prior to the, um, hearing of the DDO appeal. Um, in that staff report, you'll also have the recommendation made by the design review board to support. Any other?
Uh, Bruce Dawson, um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank God. Um, yeah, the, uh, if, if we're hearing a DDO appeal, I mean, I've been through the DDO process once quite a while ago. And, and so if we're being asked to appeal a DDO decision, if the owner has made this DDO and the DDO has been approved, uh, who then is appealing the DDO decision?
So, Mr. Dawson, uh, members of the board and Mr. Chair. So, uh, any interested party can appeal a DDO decision, whether it was for approval or for denial. Um, anybody, a party of record can appeal. Um, in the case for next, next month, it is a, uh, neighbors, neighborhood association representative that is appealing the DDO decision to approve.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Sure. Um, and just to make one, one more thing clear, um, when making the decision it's essentially going to be, um, to recommend to either uphold the director's decision, reverse the director's decision, reverse the director's decision or uphold the director's decision with conditions, so, um, those would be the options available to the board.
Okay.
Any other?
No, I have no more questions.
Okay. Mr. Chair, any other questions?
No, I don't have any.
That's all I have. Um, no, has anything, Mr. Chair, you're, um, more than welcome to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, yes, there's, uh, no reason not to, um, let's adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.